Okay, how's that? Do it better? All right. All right, thanks for coming down tonight. Anticipated we might have another big crowd, so we moved it up here. I hope everybody's comfortable. And I think there's probably a good reason why most folks are here tonight, probably not for the regular board meeting, because we don't get a crowd this big, but more, I think, for the topic of the application that we heard last week at the public hearing. So what I'd like to do is, the board's indulgence go out of order of our regular public board meeting. Typically, we'll go through all of the board business, and then we'll open it up for public participation. But I flipped that around tonight, since everybody's here and probably wants to talk about one singular topic. So let's do the public participation first, and we'll do that till about 9 o'clock. Then we'll go into the regular board business, and then we'll adjourn for the evening, okay? So again, I think what's on most people's minds, of course, is the application for the project that came up at 300 South 12th Street. It drew a lot of attention. There was a lot of information put out there, a lot of flyers and stuff, a lot of wrong information. But what it brought out was a lot of concerns that people had. And that's great, because that's the whole reason that we have public hearings. The process that we go through for any property owner who wants to make modifications to their property is pretty much the same. And it was the same for this property owner as well. They wanted to develop their property. We took a look at it. You know, it had some merits, had some demerits, had some credits, had some bad things. But like all projects, it goes through a process. What they do is, you want to do something to your property, go to the building department, you ask for a building permit. If it's within the code, then the building department gives you a building permit, and you're on your way. If it's not, the building department issues a notice of disapproval. And then you have some options. You can either not do your project, or you can appeal it to either the zoning board of appeals, or the village board if it's a use permit that you're looking to get a variance on. So there's different processes. Now, usually, one of the bigger ones are the use permit. People want a variation from how they use their property. And that was the case here, as was the case in several other use requests that we had. So, but the historical approach that this board has taken on these kind of things is to say, "Listen, we're not going to tell you what to do with your property. There's a process. Go through the process." So when the idea was presented to the board several years ago, that Harley Davidson, for example, wanted to put a motorcycle dealership, he said, "You know, we don't have an opinion. Put it through the process." And so that project is, and still is today, going through the process. When, I think there was an apartment building on Jericho that was proposed on South 12th Street years ago. Same thing, if I recall. I think that one's been through the process, and it wasn't successful. There was a storage facility down here at South 4th Street. Honestly, the board wasn't too excited about it, but the owner has property rights. They went through the process. They had a public hearing. The board weighed all the facts and data about the project, determined its merits, and in that case, denied it. The applicant sued the board, which is suing the village, which is suing us. And our attorney says, "Well, you know what? You really don't have a very strong case on a legal standpoint." And when challenged, when they take that to court and they look at the documents of the public hearing and what was read into the public hearing and all the facts and data involved, an objective observer, a judge, is more likely going to side in that case with the property owner, in which case, all of our leverage goes out the window and our ability to control how that project would be built. Which is the case in all these kinds of things. We're moving to litigation in another property of a car dealership down Jericho Turnpike. Went through the same process. Went to a public hearing. We heard the case, and we denied it. They sued, and we'll probably go to litigation on that, because we have a pretty strong case in our favor. And each one of these, the way the board decides this at the end of the day is, "What do these five groups of your neighbors think is best for the village of New Hyde Park?" What do we think, and what I've said over and over again, we use as our guiding principle, is, "What will be the best thing to preserve and improve the suburban character of New Hyde Park?" Because that's what these five people feel very, very dearly about. And that's why they invest so much of their time away from their families to do what they do, to protect our village. And this is the same process that has been followed with this project down here at 300 South 12th Street. Now, with regard to that project and its status, so we had the public hearing to get the facts and data, in which case, the applicant, as in all cases, is expected to present expert testimony to us about what are the impacts from an environmental standpoint, which includes traffic and noise and all sorts of things. And economic impact, and all those things that are important to us. And so, we have to consider it with a right brain, which is emotional, and our left brain, which is analytical. And remembering that the judge is really going to look at it on the left brain as far as, "Did we follow the law? Do we have a strong case? If the board is inclined to deny it, then we'll stand up to appeal." So that's the way it's been handled. So it's gone through that process. We held that hearing open. The attorney, Ben Chonkal, here could probably explain it in more technical terms than I am, for open for additional comment. And that's where it stands today. In the course of that, we also, which is the purpose of the public hearing, is not only for the applicant to present their case, but also for us to ask qualifying questions from the board, and to hear the questions and concerns of the public, which is extremely important to us in arriving at our decision. And we did. We had a lot of input. And a lot of input that, quite frankly, we, as neighbors, can relate to quite well. So, but nevertheless, we do, as a board, who's sitting out as the arbiters of this process, have to be objective until the point we render a decision. Realistically, I can tell you, and unless the attorney here knocks me over and takes the mic away, I don't think that this application has much of a chance in hell to pass. But, you know, that has to be decided through the process. You know, unless the applicant, of course...
I'm right, I heard something. I think one of the misconceptions that a lot of people have, because I've heard, I walk around the block, and I did a late cleanup. I'm sorry, about the property. I'll stand up. And I think one of the biggest misconceptions that people have is just trying to understand the process the mayor just laid out. I've heard people basically come to me, "Well, once it goes to a public hearing, it's a done deal." That is absolutely not the case. As a man pointed out, the whole idea of a public hearing is to get your input. And, you know, just the fact that we have people here, I apologize, I missed the hearing itself. I was away on business and so forth. But the fact that you came out and expressed your opinions, that's part of the policy of the board, which is exactly what we, as the board, want. Because that gives us the information and gets the input from you in terms of how we want to shape the village to include Second and Third Avenue. So that's exactly where we are. And we've got, I mean, you know, our clerk gave us volumes, volumes of input, you know, of what should be the character of the village, you know, some positive, obviously some negative. But now, the whole idea is to take this input and start looking at how, as a community, form Second and Third Avenue and, you know, make it into an area that, you know, we all want to utilize, make it a vibrant downtown, something similar to New Hyde Park, something to Avenue and Shoreport, but clean it up a little bit, make it something that people want to spend some time in the area.
So just to build a little bit more upon what the mayor has spoke about. First of all, my name is Ben Chonkal. The mayor indicated I'm the village attorney for this village. And the mayor indicated that it is the board's job to be impartial arbiters in the process of hearing an application. And the reason for that is twofold. A board that gets an application through its building department in the normal course of business and following the process cannot be predisposed, one way or another, towards an application. And you ask why? Well, the reason is, is if a board shows a predisposition before an application comes through the process and is presented to the board with its facts and with the evidence that's required for them to present in order to make out their case, well, the board can be held accountable for that through a challenge in the courts. And what kind of challenge, or what is the basis for such a challenge? The standard that is applied by the courts is, "Was the board arbitrary and capricious in their determination?" And so, a board that speaks out either against an application or in favor of an application before the application even has evolved or had the chance to go through the process, runs the risk, like the mayor said, we are involved in other litigations of not only having a litigation, but possibly getting a negative outcome in that litigation, okay? So that's why, when the board is here and hearing the evidence for the first time, they're really not speaking out at that time with regard to the pros and cons. They're here as arbiters of all the facts, and then later on down the road to render a determination. That night was, by no stretch of the imagination, going to be the first night that that hearing was going to happen. That night, the board was hearing the application for the first time, and received forensic information that they had yet to process. And just so you know, the process that we have in our book for developers or any applications that are large applications, they're required to deposit money with the village for a developer's fund to cover the costs and expenses that are involved with the review of that application. So what does that mean? We have the reporter. We have the notice requirements. We have the legal. The point I'm trying to make is, that night, we also had an expert from an environmental firm that was sitting next to me and the other attorney, that was going to be in receipt of all the information we were receiving that night, reviewing the traffic analyses, the parking analyses, all of the testimony of the public as well as the applicant, and utilizing that information to go back to the applicant with a laundry list of the insufficiencies or the holes in their data, and to try to evoke from them more information. So that was the beginning of the process. Now, as the mayor has indicated to this, to the crowd this evening, to the public, that night, the board continued the application with the idea that it was nowhere close to being a done process. From what I'm gathering, from what I've heard from the board this evening, this application is not going to be on an agenda. The board is going to focus its attention to discussing the area in general with you to see if the public will be involved in a process to let the board know what they'd like to see in that area for the development of the "Station Plaza" area. So I hope that sheds a little light on the process for you.
Thank you. Now, I do want to get open to questions, because that's why everyone's here. But on the Station Plaza, perhaps part of the confusion in all of this was, this project came off kind of tangential to what we've expressed we'd like to see done down Second and Third Avenue. And Trusty Berger mentioned 7th Street. I'm quite fond of using the image of Garden City 7th Street and putting that in New Hyde Park. I think that's something that would be a very nice asset, where today, we have some industrial buildings that aren't very attractive to look at. We think that would be a vibrant kickstart to New Hyde Park, and something that New Hyde Park should be proud of. So, but you know what? We don't know how to do that. And this board, and I've been on many boards here over the years, I've never seen a workload on a board as much as this one. Usually, the village board has the village operations oversee, might have a road project every first quarter every year, it has a budget to get through, and that's pretty much it. But this board is dealing, and has been dealing with our Long Island Railroad Third Track, which is a black hole in terms of sucking energy, sucking attention, and sucking time away from us, away from me personally, away from Ryanair, who's taking a lot of it, away from our superintendent, who's recovering from heart surgery tonight. And at the same time, we're trying to make good on some of the promises and commitments that the governor made for us in consideration for all the hell that we're going through down here in New Hyde Park, like a new DPW garage. So we've been promised funding for that. We've been promised funding to kickstart this downtown concept. We were promised money, and we got money for roads. We did two years of road projects that we had no money for in the village car. But we had to take a five- or six-year hiatus on doing roads in New Hyde Park, because we ran out of money for roads. But because of the money that we got from the state, we were able to do 5th Avenue's, South 6th Street, North 6th Street, South 9th Street. Where we wouldn't, those roads would have had to wait and every other road behind it. So we were able to do that. We are concerned that this promise is not going to last forever. We have to get our hands on this money. We have to get the revenue stream coming in. So we have to focus our attention on getting an architect coming up with a design for the DPW garage. And now, we're going to approach on Nuzzi Field. Now, we're going to destroy Nuzzi Field, because we're going to move DPW operations next door on that. So now, we have to come up with plans for renovation of Nuzzi Field, which is great, because heck, we'll get a new park out of there, too. We'll get a new DPW garage. We'll get a new park. But all of this takes time and attention from these five people you see up here, six people. So, and the other project is, we have this vision of this very nice downtown on Second and Third Avenue, which we'd love to develop. And strategically, maybe that's the long game for us. That's a big benefit out of what we could come out of this railroad project with having New Hyde Park look better than it does. But how to do it? Don't know. We talked to designers. We talked to planners. We talked to the golfers here and there. Council said, "Listen, you create an overlay district, and the people will come. They'll give you ideas, and you can do it that way." So, "Okay, we'll check that off. We'll do the overlay district, and we'll figure it out as we go along." Meanwhile, this project pops up. Now we have to stop and turn attention to it. But what we never did, we never really had the roadmap as to, how do we plan out this downtown area? How do we figure out what exactly everybody wants? You know, we have some ideas. We've shared some ideas that we have. I keep saying Alexandria, Virginia, who's like, "It's beautiful." You know, the other analogy is, as I said, 7th Street, the Flore Park by the train station. So there's a lot of different ideas. We don't know what the right idea is. We need the village. We need to come together as a village to come up with that answer. So some of the other mayors told me, "You should talk to this group, Vision Long Island." That's what they do. They're experts. They walk villages through this process. So last night, we did. We talked to them. And we will probably engage their help, paid for by grants, to conduct the public sessions, to solicit the information, congeal it into a consensus, and help us get on board the right town planners, the right engineering firms, the right landscape architects, lay out the streets, lay out the right zoning codes, and that sort of thing. And that's, I think, the phase that we're at now. And that's where we need everybody's help, because we can't do it. We don't know how to do it. We need to do it as a village.
Well, the key point in that is that we don't have a master plan, and we really are just talking about the overlay district. So we really want to work on and rock the residents, rock the neighborhood. So we are looking for input, and we want to do this in a collaborative way, where we can see where the interest is, see where the interest is at, and work together. So, you know, it seems as though a lot has happened. You know, we've really just been talking and learning and trying to understand everything that should be done. So again, we will be looking for input and learning.
So what's the next steps, right? A lot of people are asking in terms of the next steps moving forward. So the mayor, you know, and the attorney noted that right now, we've got to remain impartial. Right now, the 300 South 12th Street is on hold, right? We've got the inputs, but the board itself, the next steps, what we're looking at, is basically, we're working with you, the community, taking some of the inputs and start developing the master plan. Take a look at the area we'll have going forward in the next six to eight months, and so forth. Basically, looking at the area, having some sessions in terms of, you know, if you call them a charrette or whatever, so we can get them, that's like a French word. Basically, providing them with the information. All right? So that as we lay out, and this is with Vision Long Island, as we lay out the kind of what we want, we get the community to help, all right? A lot of people were obviously against the four-story structure, okay? So maybe it's not the four-story structure. Maybe not as good a view. You know, things like that, okay? But you've got to look at that and work at it with the community. Will it please everybody? Will it make some people happy? Yes, and so forth. But we have to have a consensus. We have to move forward and to do something with Second and Third Avenue. I bring up, you know, I'm too young to actually remember this, but I've heard a lot of stories of what happened back in the '69, '70s, all right? When the Long Island Railroad came through the first time, it raised the tracks, okay? I understand there's a lot of discussion, just like you have now with the Third Track, okay? Where people did not want the tracks raised in New Hyde Park, in Garden City, and so forth. So Flore Park went forward, right? And they took advantage, okay? Look at downtown Flore Park and 7th Avenue. That was all built, and as a result, of the Long Island Railroad and the recreational park in Shoreport. That is a vibrant, booming area. That's all we're looking at. It's like, what can we do with Second, Third Avenue now and have the opportunity to, you know, make it a more presentable area and so forth? How many did you take the Long Island Railroad? All right? When you go through some of the, I used to take it, too. When you go through some of the villages, you know, Rich Ballistick brought this up, Trusty Ballistick. When you go through some of the villages, right? You see, you look on the outside and so forth, you see some shops, even forest hills. You've got nice little shops there and so forth. You know, you just go to Flore Park, etc. To get to New Hyde Park, what do we have? There's nothing there, I'm saying. It's like ours. So that's what they have.
The Pennsylane, Jerry, the Jerry Pike.
So, you know, do you want to turn over?
Yeah.
So let's do that.
One of the turnpikes, still. One at a time.
Go ahead, try again.
Uh, my name is Mary, and I have, you talked about two towns in Flore Park. Two towns in that Flore Bar, that's a block. It's not really a nice, it's a bit of a walk down there. I thought it'd be a parking. It's just, it's not just a street. They have new back, they have parking, very limited parking in the back. I don't think you should compare New Hyde Park to Flore Park. I don't want to be like Flore Park. I think if you're asking about neighborhood, then you just have to be following Flore Park in your voice. It's in the street from Garden City. They don't have a train going through. It's a beautiful area. There's no trains on, you know, on the side. I don't think you should compare. Take our area and build it up to what it is, not to what somebody else is. We have a beautiful village with a beautiful environment. They put their vehicles, and you should consider that. That's what we can do, not what they do.
Right, thank you. Go in the back, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about it. You had mentioned Flore Park. You're mentioning Garden City. And you're mentioning, you know, towns that are... Honestly, I'm going to speak for the kids right now. I'm embarrassed for New Hyde Park. We're losing our kids in the sports program. Losing them. You go to Flore Park, their rec center is phenomenal. You go to Garden City Park, their rec center is phenomenal. We played there last night. The parents were like, "Wow. What are we paying our taxes for? So that we can build up the train station and have more traffic and more, who knows what coming into the neighborhood? Build something for the kids. Something needs to be done for these kids. Something needs to be done for these kids. We have no fields, we have no lights. The only field we did have, you took away from us, which is now being wasted doing nothing where we could be using it. I'm sure there's more sports support. Why doesn't, I mean, it's, I don't know the reasons why we don't have a field at lights, we don't have turf fields, we don't have, we can't even play our baseball games. We can't even finish the season right now because we have no fields to play on. We are losing the kids to travel teams. Both of my boys play on travel teams now because New High Park Baseball is down the tubes. We used to have seven, eight teams years ago, we have three now. It's embarrassing, a total embarrassment. And if it's all about making money for who knows who, let's think about the future, let's think about the kids, and make this a town for the kids.
Can I get on one thing? You can carry Garden City and Flora Park. The one concept that they have that we do not have is the police department. And if you're going to add new building and bars and this and businesses, we do not have the police force to protect us like they do. And I think that's a main point. And if we bring, and if we do bring all this, and we try to get our own police department, it's going to add more taxes on home owners. I think that's a component that should be counted, because you're adding more people, and my daughter had her accident, and by, you know, with traffic, and it took 40 minutes to get her house. And I just think that should be added into it because the police that protect us are very far away.
I want to touch on the Nuzzi situation again, the field over there. You know, the field has been sitting dormant since we were told that we will not get a permit this year because it was going to be used as a temporary waste site. And I don't know what the problem is, but March, April, now we're into May, and nothing has happened. And those boys could have been on that field this whole time, and we're all stuffed into the box. We have two parks in Village Park, in New High Park. One in Memorial and one in Nuzzi, that's all we have. And you're going to take one of them and turn them into a temporary waste site. So, it leaves us one park. And now, we said, "Okay, we'll figure out how to go over there." We're in May, and that field has sat dormant for two and a half months. I want to know why? We couldn't have a permit with limitations, but we could have been there for the children. And when you said, "Hey, tomorrow we're breaking down, you're going to have to stop playing," that would have been acceptable and actually reasonable. So, now we're all backed up, the boys have nowhere to play, we're all the rain, and I'm wondering if you'll be able to tell us that we can get there this weekend and start playing ball again until you start doing your project with the dump site?
Well, you know, going back on the ball field, we had planned to break ground on demolition of the DPW garage in June. That's probably going to be delayed. But what we wanted to do is give Lily as much advanced notice as we could so that they'd be able to reschedule the games on other fields.
One field.
And in the village of New High Park.
We have one field for that level of baseball. We have one field for the 12-year-olds. They cannot play at the road school, it's too small, it's not appropriate for them. These boys started at the road school, then they go to Memorial, and then they get to Nuzzi where there's a fence, and it's beautifully groomed, and this is the field of dreams for them. And we understood, we sat back and we accepted that we're not going to have it. We heard it in January, we heard it in February, but we did not bark or bite back. It's now May, and the field has sat there for two and a half months because your plans or whatever happened didn't work out. Somebody could have called and said, "Guess what, this is not..." By the way, you just said it's not going to break ground until June? Why couldn't we use it in March and May, in April?
Because if it was going to break, start demolition, you'd have to move the DPW facility next door. And that was, that's the whole purpose of having an approach on the field. And the idea and what Deputy Mayor is working on are plans for a new and better field with better accommodations and trash lights. At the end of the day, you know, well, having gone through the pains of construction, we'll have a better facility at the end of the day.
And again, I acknowledge that, I do acknowledge that.
Kitchen, it's hell to live through, at the end of the day, it's pretty rough.
But any given time, somebody could have said, "The plans are not working out right now." You could use the field until, maybe a week or two notice, you can't use it anymore. And this is what we're all upset about, because we work these fields, by the way. We don't have the village workers do it, we do it. They might cut the grass, but whenever it rains, whenever something happens, we've been working on it, us, the parents in this district for years. And all we're saying to you is, if you're not going to do anything with this place till June, can we use the field for the next two or three weeks?
Well, we can talk to Vinnie about it.
Well, we have, Vinnie says that you won't give us a permit.
No, I said, "We can talk to Vinnie about it."
Appreciate that.
Well, Eddie.
Yeah, thank you very much, it's important to the village board. I think collaborative process, collaborative process is important. As Eric Alexander, my good friend, can tell you, that collaboration and visioning needs, so you can get an idea of what people want. But you said you don't know how to do it, or we can work together on how we can do it. The law that you put into effect last year in the amendment on March 21st is very vague, it's only two pages long. So, an applicant can come in and give us what this applicant wants at South 12th Street. Basically, it's less than, what, 44, 5, 6 acres, something like that, half an acre. So, that's 71 apartments on a half an acre, for an acre, that's 150. Now, the town has just passed an overlay district in North Lawrence and Inwood, and it's this thick. And what it has is, one of the districts is a residential townhouse rowhouse district. And it's 42 acres, which is about a third of the size of New High Park. It's about the size of New High Park south of the railroad tracks. What that allows for nothing more than three stories, mostly owner-occupied, workforce housing, but only 14 units per acre, and it's in the law. So, if you translated that to this property, it would only be seven units. The law has to be massaged, and you have to, you hear the specifics are in the overlay, it's on the website, to tell you exactly what you can do so you don't get an application where it's 150 apartments per acre if this went through. And if you extrapolate that from the end of Plaza Avenue to South 4th Street and South 8th on the south side to New High Park Road, that's 2,000 people. 2,000 people, and that increases the size of the village by 20% more than just 2,000. So, I hope we can maybe look at the law, Section 195.3.2, to be more specific, and this is one of the roadmaps, and Vision Long Island can help you to be absolutely specific as to what you can do so we don't get an applicant that gives us this. That's just way too much of an over-intensification. And the fact that, you know, you can give them a density bonus, but that, you have to give them the release from the parking, the height, and 100% lot coverage, which we do not have anywhere in New High Park.
Right, that, thank you, I appreciate that. The over-intensification that, and I hope I don't go awry of what I'm allowed to say here, but I think that over-intensification of this particular application is probably where, why it's where it's at today, is from the status. Pam.
The applicant for 300 South 12th Street is the first of many that are going to line up to build exactly the same thing as the council. He's built the long, long, long island. I would encourage you to go look at Rocking Down Train Station. Their transit are related to it, because about 12 buildings that are virtually identical to this. And it's added nothing to their village, it is tremendous. And it's not at all what we're looking for in New High Park. So, they're looking at this as a look. They're going to do it, and they're going to say, "Well, you hate this guy." I don't know, so you're... They're going to say, "This guy's bad, we wanted the entire strip down to Comer Avenue." And it's, it's not just that it's not the character of New High Park, but that it will become the character of New High Park, just only so.
To us as well, thank you.
Cheryl, though, I've lived in town for over 70 years, and my parents have lived here openly. And I know what the city is like. I've never wanted to live in Manhattan, I worked in Manhattan. And what I would like to say, that I live just four blocks away from the commercial development of my South 12th Street. We have never had problems with them. They are respective, they are the first people to shovel. Do you know, I'm walking station every day, and I should be complaining about it. There are so many homeowners on the way that don't even shovel their side streets, but the commercial building is new. We have never had problems with them, and in our area, it's quiet on the way. We're very happy with that, we don't want the additional traffic coming in. The other thing you have to consider, if you close off Third Avenue and there's really not access to Coleman, it's blocked here, unlike Garden City and unlike Flora Park. There's access in and out of their commercial business. We really will not have that once these little villages protect. And I think that's caused a very big disturbance as well, especially with the traffic. They would have to go on all the side streets. And 12th Street, they wouldn't have access to that bus. So, they'll force the traffic down every one of the side streets in that area. I am totally against any of the important developments that are going to happen. But the fact is, we're against it for a couple reasons, and the fact, to me, is, take over those commercial building buildings. Why can we figure out that? Because people actually are very respective of the residents of this town, of the towns.
And they're hiring.
And, yeah, so, for the record, nobody's saying on this board that we want apartments, but what we're striving to do is upgrade the industrial district to a more commercial, peaceful type of thing. Right, right. No, 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 I appreciate that.
Also, I've been an executive in retail history my entire career. It is the highest rate of vacancy right now. Every mall there, every main street there, it concerns me that we want to bring retail into the area. It's going to happen. They'll be there for six months, and they'll make money in a year. So, we'll be stuck with them for four, but we just have to go. Because it's really a hard time for a town.
Right, and that's, I think, is absolutely part of the whole process of doing those sort of studies and looking at, you know, what is the retail demand in this area and so forth? And I think, and that's what our friends from, I think, Vision Long Island anticipate is going to help us with. So.
I'm 60.
We are building this, Dr. Gilovich has been insensitive. We're giving them something, tax deduction, something. And who will pay the school tax? These are little things, they make a big thing.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm going to say that before we all get all over good or bad about it, let's really try to think, and maybe think outside the box. Instead of trying to be like Flora Park or Garden City, why don't we be us? That's number one. Number two, I think we need to think very carefully about, and I'm not jumping all over you, but mayor, with all due respect, when you said like, "The grant money is there, and we better get it before it goes." What if any strings are attached to the grant money? Because it seems like we're looking at it like the state is our answer, and I think the state is our problem.
Yes.
So, let's maybe, if we can say that we don't want apartments, if we say that we don't need commercial development because there's already good stores and plenty of vacancies to boot, so we don't really need more, maybe we think outside the box, and it doesn't have to be commercial development or residential development. Maybe we could just make it nice, and maybe we could tell the governor to keep his money, and we just do it ourselves. You're saying, not you, but I'm saying, if the proposal is, it's almost like if we build it, they will come. You're talking about building residential, and we're talking about building commercial, and then we're going to do a study, we're approving, possibly, I know you're not, but approving a plan, and then doing a study to see if they'll come. Why don't we let the free market rule it? And instead of saying, "If we build it, they will come," I think it should be the opposite. If we want it, they'll build it. And it won't be government money and payments in lieu of taxes. So, if you get a payment in lieu of taxes to build a commercial development, so screw all the guys that have been here getting their asses kicked with taxes all this time? And then they get a break? It's almost like the Amazon thing, I don't want to start up, yay, they get it. Really, so 10 years, $300 billion of no taxes? Screw the guy that's been in business the whole time then.
Yep.
I think that we should maybe try to think outside the box, maybe not feel controlled by a grant that has strings attached. Or maybe there's no strings attached, but it's going to go away if we don't do something soon. So, then you're going to rush to do something, just to use the money. No money is free. It may be an interesting thing, but no money is free. The next thing you know, he's going to be telling you what you have to do. Because he knows better than us what we need. So, let's maybe think about it, and if it meant no government money, no apartments, unless a private builder really builds them and follows the code, a code that wasn't changed just before, a commercial development that needs something practical. If there are money, if they're going to make the money, and if they're not going to make the money, they won't build it because they know they'll lose it. But if they get free money, maybe they'll build it anyway, because what difference does it make? If I get free government money and then the places go vacant, they get money anyway. If I made just one more thing, if I, I think that if we got together and if people said, "I'm hearing talk about stuff for kids, I'm hearing talk about just make it look nice. We don't need more commercial, we don't need more residential." Well, if we don't need commercial, and we don't need residential, and we just want to make it look nice, then we really don't need a lot of money either. And we don't need the government money. Anytime the government gets involved, they get screwed up. I almost got assassinated at the Clinton G. Martin pool building thing because everybody was saying, no offense with the sports, I'm a big sports guy, kids' sports, but everybody was like, "Give my kid a pool." It's not the government's job to give your kid a pool. That's not their job. And by the way, if private industry owned it, it wouldn't have fallen apart.
Just to clarify, to build upon some of your comments, just so we're unequivocally clear. The grant money that the mayor is referring to is not grant money that was going towards any applicant. The grant money that the mayor is speaking to is money that was part of an MOU that was negotiated when the Third Track project was coming along.
But, you know, I know that wasn't...
Okay, no, and it's for public amenities, it's to be utilized for public amenities. I just want the crowd to be clear about that.
I think, I think they are, and I know, I am, and I think what I'm making is this, if we don't go with a big commercial, if we don't go with a big potential, we don't need any of the money. And then, no, it's only, no, maybe they will do something to tell you that.
No, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that the public is clear about that. As far as the taxes go, this board doesn't have the power to forgive the taxes, you know? It's the IDA, the Industrial Development Agency. But the discussions that were had with the applicant were through me, letting them know that if they were going to go the route of a pilot, that this village would not even consider an application unless the village was made whole through a community host agreement, which means that for the life of the pilot, they would be paying to the village the equivalent of what the village taxes would have been.
What's the price of them for a pilot?
In lieu of taxes, yes. So, they would have been making the village whole through the life of the payment in lieu of taxes.
Well, I don't want to, but it's not you, I'm just saying it's not you with the grant and the topic, it's industrial development agency. Fine, but if all of the people that put me here are against this, and you seem to be more against it, don't say that to them. And you said before, there's not a chance, now, don't say that on here. Because that's going to be neutral. But my point would be, if it's not, if you don't agree with most of you, or most of the people agree with that, and even if it is the IDA, then let's you and us go to the IDA, the torches, and let them stop, stop this. Right. And we don't need to know, nothing's, we don't need to know.
And the last point I just wanted to make is, this concept that the board adopted with regard to that overlay district was conceived in conjunction with the project that's going on by the MTA with regard to the Third Track. And this law was adopted long before the application was even considered or thought of or submitted. This law was adopted last summer, I think either June or July. This application was received in January or February or March of this year.
Was it conceived as a...
The public hearing was opened before that, it was maybe May of 2018.
And the amendment was just then?
I understand, but the amendment was a clarification.
It wasn't a amendment.
I understand, I'm just, I'm...
You're making another dish.
I'm just trying to show the crowd that there's a timeline, and this law was adopted, you know, conceivably six months prior to the submission of an application. And listen, the applicant, as an applicant, has a right to submit an application.
I think it's a matter of... They should still be allowed to apply.
And the reason...
It was not six months, it was nine months. I know that all of that, they made everybody here. Somehow that was...
And then, just one final point, and then I'll... The mayor will pass it off, it's not for me to pass it off to anybody. But the final point that I was going to make is, is that the law was written the way the law is written because it is 100% a discretionary law on the part of the village board. The board does not have to, in a sense, when I say discretionary, we don't have to, this board does not have to put it on another agenda if it chooses not to. Okay?
But if it was discretionary law, and it wasn't written, and the board didn't allow this, it wouldn't have happened in question.
Well, I understand that.
How did that suddenly get conceded?
Well, because the...
The person people there...
Well, I'll let, I'll refer to the mayor on that, but like I said, the project that was going on in the area was looked at as perhaps a point in time where we could utilize what was going on down there to make it a vibrant...
Or maybe we should have done this then.
So, again, I think I mentioned before, the genesis of the overlay district was the vice-council here to help us get to our vision of improving the industrial area on Second, Third Street. So, he said, "How can we do that?" And I said, "Well, this is one of the steps you have to take." And we may have taken some steps in sequence, and... And, you know, and certainly the public engagement, which was starting tonight, and this is a fantastic dialogue, and I really appreciate a very intelligent and very calm conversation here that will benefit the town. So, I mean, that, that was the genesis of the.
My left and my right brain are waiting. This really started in June of 2017, to be honest with you. You filled out an application for Long Island Regional Light and Light Council in 2017. Is that correct? I have it. If you want it, I'll give it to you. So that's two years ago that this was in the discussion mode. An application was submitted and the wall was rolling and I would imagine that took place around the same time you were doing the heavy lifting with the governor and the MTA. It was all part of the same kind of scenario. I'll give you a copy.
Okay, yeah, because I'm not, you are.
Oh, I'm, I'm doing my homework.
Do that.
The Village of New High Park is a tiny, one-square-mile village. It has approximately 9,000 residents. Whether we are longtime residents or newcomers, the vast majority of us chose to live here because we're a predominantly privately-owned, single-family suburban community. We're two stops from the largest metropolitan area in the entire world. And there's massive pressure on us to be the solution to problems that we had absolutely no part in creating and presently don't exist here. Evidence, in April of this year, there was a press release by Market Watch that reported that the rents for the middle-class workforce in the five boroughs of New York City rose to an all-time record high. And those rents, as the rents rose, landlords were less likely to grant markdowns on rents. So let's face it. There's a reason why the Third Track project was changed to the Long Island Island Expansion Project. It wasn't about easing present-day commuter demands. It's more about laying down a third track and building the housing to accommodate all the workers who can't afford to live in New York City. We're connecting the dots. This village is at a crossroads. We need you, our mayor and board of trustees, to be our voice. The voice of New High Park's voting and tax-paying public. Not big-money developers who value the 32-minute commute to Manhattan more than our suburban life and our peaceful neighborhood. There is a silver lining to this whole situation. Hundreds, hundreds of people have joined together over the course of the last two months. Hundreds. And we all came together to act as one in a historically unprecedented manner. I was reminded that although New High Park is a beautiful tapestry of people from all different walks of life, we share one unshakable common bond. And that's our value for our suburban life here. Tonight, we assembled to demonstrate that strong bond again. The mayor and the board are elected to be our vote guardians of our voice and our neighborhood. We entrusted all of you to stand in defense of all those mighty pressures. Thanks to the folks in Albany and the MTA, this whole experience has taken a very bad toll on us. Our trust in local government was rattled to its core. Make no mistake, this sleeping giant has been awakened. Thank you. The proposal was our alarm clock. We are not compromising our values here. We won't give up on what we've worked so hard to preserve. If you go down to the village hall and you sit in the meeting room and you look around and all the faces, the framed faces around the room, those were all your predecessors who did the very hard job that you are facing right now. Probably pressures that you, they have never even known, noted before. But you're here now and you're supposed to be our voice. We're not gonna sell out to the highest bidder, no matter what the amenities are. More people, increased development, parking and traffic issues, noise, declining infrastructure, increases of stress on our schools and our fire and our EMT and our police districts, and all the impacts to our quality of life are implied by the MTA's proposals. Who's winning? It's not us. If you really heard us on April 30th, if you really heard our voices, you will hold fast to our vision of New High Park. Not the MTA's, not the governor of New York's, and dare I say, not Eric Alexander's. Our.
It's not my vision.
Okay. We are New High Park's tradition and we are its character. Be reminded that we're not a blighted community. In fact, our property values here are soaring. Why? Because people like it just the way it is. If there's any revitalization that's considered, and that's questionable for me, not only must everyone be included in the vision for it, but the plans must respect our traditions and our culture and our character. Anything less is in progress. It's exploitation. On behalf of my neighbors here tonight and those who couldn't be with us because their parents and they're attending a school concert tonight, we need a good sign of faith from you. We know where Local Law 195-3.2 came from. It arrived in the middle of the night with a check signed by the governor in an envelope with the MTA with a return address. If accepting that $5 million comes with strings that mandate somebody else's vision for us, return it, we don't want it. So tonight, on behalf of pretty much everybody here, I'm asking you to repeal 195-3.2 from the village code immediately. Let's start from scratch and look at the whole village. Not just Second and Third Avenue. Let's look at how everything fits together. We are one, not Second and Third Avenue. Doing so will reassure us that you really do share our vision. And it will be a good sign that you stand with us in the face of some mighty challenges and relentless pressures that you're under right now. Remember, we are predominantly single-family, peaceful, neighboring, hometown people. And that's the way we want to keep it. We love it just enough to fight for it. We can be partners or we could be adversaries. We're hoping we're partners with you. Will you be the voice for New High Park's voting public? Or will you be the voice for the governor, the MTA, and all those big-money developers who value the commute more than our lifestyle? Is this still Nassau County? Or are you gonna let the governor and the MTA transform us into the sixth borough?
If I didn't say a couple of things in my defense. Yeah, I've been doing heavy lifting for New High Park. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a minute and I'm gonna tell you. The, because I can't count up the hours that I, that's what I've spent boarding High Park, protecting it from the MTA, from the governor. It was, it was my house that Newsday took a picture of with my "No Third Track" sign in front of my house, which brought me home for my, my vacation, in the middle of the vacation, because my 25-year-old daughter was home alone. And I didn't know what kind of creeps were gonna come to my house, whether they were for it or against it. And I had to call the police to, to guard my house until I got home. I have spent countless hours defending the village of New High Park. For any insinuation, any misguided imaginative thought that I in any way have done anything improper is absolute. You planted the seed, Diane, you planted the seed.
No, no, no. No, she didn't.
First of all, yes, we, we accepted $830,000 for roads that was done. We are reimbursed for that. We will be reimbursed for New Department of Public Works garage. We'll be reimbursed for that. We hope we're reimbursed for renovations to this facility for the purpose of, the purchase of unit meters and for a lot of other items, improvements that we wanna do for this village through grants from the state. Because we can't afford to do it ourselves. Some things, yeah, we need to, we need to take back the state taxes that we paid. Okay. Because when someone, a property owner, goes through the process, it's been our tradition, we give them their due force, their due process, and we do it. So, I mean, to, to create, create the narrative that the two are connected and that there's some evil scheme behind it is, is absolutely ridiculous. I don't think so. I don't think so. Not from what I, not from what I see on Facebook and some of the, some of the comments that are made. I'm sorry if I'm a little bit defensive. Maybe not from you, but from, from others who are, who are in some. All right, listen, I don't wanna devolve this now because I don't want to make this about, about me. Yes, it was written by our attorney. The gentleman sitting next to me.
The funds aren't for the Transit Overlay District. The funds are, are to be utilized, it's grant money to be utilized by the village for public amenities. And the mayor and the board thought that that would be a good place for it to be utilized. You're, you're trying to link separate things, they're not, they're not. They're elected officials and from time to time they make decisions. It was a public hearing, there were three public hearings.
All I can say is everyone's getting very heated because you seem to be taking it personal or you seem to be worried about the chatter on Facebook. What other people think about working on your business is what I'll do. And if you really wanna get the chatter on Facebook, send $5 million back to Walmart and you don't have.
We didn't get it.
That's not when it passed, that's not when the local law was passed. That was an application for, for grant money.
Why are we going now after the building was brought, brought an application for a building? Why are we doing this now? Why all of a sudden is this a combination now? It was because of that application. What if that application didn't happen? And you just started doing this whole planning process without us?
Need to take a room. A property owner could have developed their property without an application coming through this board, being duly noticed and without the public being invited to be here.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
We didn't have any say about this overlay district. We didn't even know what was. Why is this happening now and not before?
And again, I'll say that there was a public hearing, there were three public hearings.
Where? Where were they?
Diane, I'm telling you what the process is. You either choose to listen or you can disregard it. I'm telling you what the process is. It's always in the Herald Courier. Every law that's adopted by, and it is productive, but you're, you're digressing at this point. I will say this, the same, the same, the same procedure is employed for every local law that's adopted. Three weeks ago, you yourself were at a local law hearing that was noted exactly the same way with the room that was bursting at the seams. So this law was. Because the notice went out. Well, somebody has to find out that there's a hearing first. Well, somebody has to find out that there's a hearing first.
One person photocall it and we put it in the entire town. For nearly not significantly different people from you to remember, wouldn't that have set an alarm off for you or representatives to say, "Why is nobody coming in and asking or showing up for this when it's a transformative plan?" I would hope from a trust factor, if you are not seeing the numbers show up or if people typically go to your meetings are not there or not aware of it, why didn't the local law say, "What's going on?" "Why is nobody responding?" "Why does significantly change your neighborhood?" So that's part of my concern is this is a trust issue and a communication issue right there.
So let me just interject here. So I'm brand new to the work. Just got elected, okay? And I've been watching the process, okay? And like I started before, I said, "This is great for community turnout." All right? Why people don't turn out to more board meetings when they are in the papers, on the e-board, the hearings are on the e-board and the papers? We cannot control what people do day in and day out. I've been in a number of organizations. Unless something goes wrong or somebody, all of a sudden, volumes of people show up, all right? But we can't, we're following the process according to the law, all right? Does needs to change? I don't know. I don't have an attorney and so forth, all right? But what people decide to do, whether to show up through hearings or not, that is their choice.
Understand, because I think the local law that we use the process, the conversation But the fact of the matter is when you're opting for a stolen election, when you said that you're going to vote out their interests, you know you're going to significantly change their interest. Okay? We still don't understand. So what we would like to try though, as a community collaboratively, is to understand the level of change. We are not in any way shoving this change down the road. We are not going to build high-rise apartments along the rail, okay? We want to work together, okay? So the law has been passed. So I think what we should focus on is not looking back and saying, "We passed it this day, passed it that day." Is let's see where we go from here. Okay, we want to work together. We don't want to stay here. Okay, and we want to understand our options. Why are we
And that's why we very strongly think of engaging Vision on Out because they can help us get the people out. Mike in the back.
Let's see, everybody's here tonight. You know I come to all your meetings for how many years? Know three or four people. Nobody cares about nothing in this village. First of all, those people up there are working very hard. I'm not taking their behalf or waddling on with this project, okay? Secondly, if you think this MTA is sticking it to them every day, you're nuts. Thirdly, which nobody mentions, the third track going down the rail is for commuters, wake up. It's for Mr. Como's venue
Yes.
in the racetrack area. He's gonna have a switch up there. So nobody has to go into Queens and come back. And you're gonna get hammered for it, okay?
He's got a plan.
They don't do nothing, the people in charge of these tracks, these people up here. They notify you on a Monday when they're talking about what they're doing. They jam it down their throats either. As far as the buildings go, any building in this community, I'm in this place 47 years, okay? Anybody have a problem hearing me? Okay, all right. I'm here 47 years. The problem in this community today is every building, everybody wants to come in here, fine. Need 17 variances, 15 apartment spots, and it's not gonna be New Hyde Park when they get what they need, okay? Nobody's coming in a little bit of a mom and pop deli that you don't even have apartment spots for. They go on the turnpike or someplace else. You need 75 spots of where you're gonna put them. I don't know how I would deal with it. I'm not taking their behalf. But sure as hell, they woke up a line here and I'm glad to see it.
All right, folks. Listen, we ran over here, but you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna go into a regular board meeting here. We're gonna take a five-minute break, go into a regular board meeting. But we are gonna have more of these meetings that are outside of the regular board meeting agenda that are focused on different topics. We get people out and I will probably ask Mr. Alexander over there to chair these meetings, to guide us, to facilitate them, so we can get this conversation going. So I'd really like to thank everybody for tonight. I'm sorry for losing my cool on behalf of my family, but thank you very much.
No apologies.
I will say that right here and now. I hear you. I hear you.
All right, all right, why don't you guys concentrate on Jerika Turnpike?
Yes.
Been worrying about Second and Third Avenue. Now, you know me. I contact my wife, I don't know how many emails she sent you about the problem that I got going on with 401. I'm still waiting for an answer from last year.
It's called the third track.
From you.
Yeah.
I'm a reply.
Yeah, I came to your house. I went, yeah.
And how many text messages, how many emails have we sent? So now I'm using my own attorney to go to 401 and say, "Guys, you know, I'm the last house on Seventh Avenue. I went the nice way. And now I don't know what I'm gonna do, but you know, I'm hiring my own attorney because I'm getting no help from you guys." At the same thing, look at this. You guys wanna do this, you know? And now finally, we got people that are coming together and they're talking about, "We're gonna bring retail to Second and Third." Let's look at Jerika Turnpike. Let's look at all the empty stores. The Dollar Store over here, is that what we want to look at? The Dollar Store? You're looking in a window, you're looking at a grid, the back of a window. That's what we want, 401, the Dollar Store. I mean, you got empty stores up and down from Cherry Valley all the way down to Dead End, empty stores. Why don't you try on Jerika Turnpike? What do we want there?
Okay, so it'll take five minutes and then we'll go into the regular board agenda. Thanks very much, folks.
I'm sorry, I tried to play the rules and not jump up and yell and have dialogue and not run into the law. What have we learned here tonight, from my observation? And I lived here since 1979. We learned number one, the majority of people don't want to go. That's it. We learned number two, if you're gonna do any planning for Second and Third Avenue, you better come up with a really good plan to get the community input and buy it. Number three, despite what you think, you have a pretty shitty job of communicating to the community. That needs to be looked into. I will tell you, I have gotten mobile calls for events an hour before. Okay, it's almost like we're gonna tell you the dumb con. So all I wanted to say, much of what I wanted to say was said by that young lady, very nice guy. Congratulations to her. But before we worry about bringing people into the community, I don't know about anybody else's neighborhood, I'd like to see some looking into the three-family houses that don't belong in the neighborhoods. And I have friends that are children, I have some parents. And I can't leave my wife, who's disabled, home for long trips that I have to take because I'm afraid of who that new neighbor is who's gonna be across the street for about a week. Do that, get rid of people who don't belong here legally. Then we can worry about bringing some people. Thank you.
If I may, I think to bring everyone together a bit, if there's different ways of giving notice, maybe we should find one consistent way in the park and agree to that. That's number one. Number two, no one's getting personal. I think everybody thinks that it would be But what I'm really gonna say is, the last thing that we kind of heard was
Taking money?
Number one, this didn't happen if the overlay law didn't come about. Then we just heard at the very end that we all really know what the overlay law means and we're all looking into it. That's like a certain California person saying, "You'll have to pass the law to see what's in the law." If no one knows what it means, maybe we shouldn't have it on the record.
Go ahead.
I have calls for town numerous times because we have homes on our block that have three, four families living in. And they call back and they tell me, "We didn't see any activity." I'm not calling for activity. I'm calling that three families, four families are living in and we're paying taxes for them to go to our schools. It's ridiculous. This has been going on for years. We've had houses on our block that some brothers complained. Nobody helped us. Now the house is knocked down and the mansion is being built. On the street, we've got four people coming in. Workers coming in, building upstairs, doing the blocks, coming downstairs in the basement. Nobody, oh, I didn't see activity. What's gonna be done about that?
You give me the address, is it local?
I give you the address
Please do.
They've been there and I get the phone call and it says, "No activity." I'm not looking for somebody that's doing activity.
I tell you, I have no tolerance for illegal apartments.
Well, let me tell you, so we come to Central Boulevard and watch it today. And you've got at least three or four of those buildings that had access to our
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. One more, Sam.
I'll be quick here. And I know I'm gonna say the same thing that Mike said about supporting you guys. And I wanted to say that there is a website for the village that has a calendar of events on it. I check it to find out when the events are happening. It takes two seconds to go online. You spend all this time on social
My 90-year-old mother can't go online. She would have been here tonight if it wasn't on the section of the park.
I understand that not everybody can go online. But to say that it's not communicated, I think is a little unfair. I find out about these events, I don't use regular newspapers. I find out about it from the website.
But on the website, it has about the third track. It doesn't
No, there is a calendar on it. You can look for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sam. All right, we'll take five, then we'll go into the regular board meeting. Thank you, folks.
By the way, if everyone leaves, they can't talk about this and then
This whole
That's why we're Who cares if they're on the
They go.
Yeah, sure.
Hello, how are you?
Good. How's the baby?
Expecting a brother or sister?
Oh, when? Don't tell me.
I'm just kidding. Oh my gosh!
I walk up and I'm like, "Oh my goodness."
Oh my god. Oh, you do?
I'm surprised I was born here.
After the last
The last fall, we missed out on him. He's fine. It was awful. He couldn't get a car. So we walked him to the house. I walked him. She goes from there. I walked from five minutes to six.
Oh, is it Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, kick off to 11:30. And then I took him to the park.
Oh, is she going to the park?
Yes. It was tough. It was tough.
And I mentioned when she started
Yeah, oh my god. I told Liz to go home, but she doesn't. She isn't good. You're taking her. I'm not. I don't
She's so
Oh, wait. Oh my god. This one, they're so smart.
They are so smart.
I went upstairs and I came back and I just wondered, "Is this a dog?" No, I don't like this. Like, she's just sitting there, looking at the photos, pretending like this grandma gonna really have this She would be old. Oh my god. She just is so funny. I was like, I didn't want to react. I was trying not to react because I wanted to get my camera. And I was like, "Don't just say cheese." And she's Let me see. I didn't make it up, Karen. I told you. I've seen Melissa. Yeah, Olive's here. A little fair and then Melissa over there. Oh, I am. Very bossy. This one's super. The crackers are, and she sits on them. Damn, what is she on? Maybe that. She's like, "Where's that, that blue stuff?"
Right down the area.
She's stuffing it in my face. I'm like, "Oh, really?" Like, we don't know what you're doing.
You know, I don't like change. I hate the old ways. I like where it was way back when. But now, like you saw tonight, changes are
Now, where are they from? Are they broke? We go all the way down. You know, this is the third track. I try and just go to the list and just go from carnation up to the ground. Because to get to glory days, it's a glory the other day. Well, then I was a dead man, but then It's like, so in a half, there's only a couple more weeks left. And that's it. I'm just gonna go to your house, get on carnation. We'll try to make this
I work down there at the
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not at that point because I have to be there. That's only over there.
I leave the house
I spent 45 years with the 42 of which
Yeah.
And then I was part of a
I saw the changes there. I don't like it way back.
Okay, do my part. And she picked her up and like
By the way, yeah.
By the way, I think I'm back here.
Oh, wow. Yeah, well, that's a lot. And she had a work day. She was coming home at 8 o'clock. I'm like She's doing What? Yeah? Yeah?
My neighbors in seventy-one.
Maybe not for long. Where's me?
You think you have enough jobs? Take the mayor's wife. This is all Solomon.
How are you?
Thank you, Jen. Our best of Christine, okay?
I will, yes, thank you.
Goodbye, sir.
No, next door. That one is next to them. Somebody's working on it. Sound secret doors?
Yeah, I don't know why more people use it. I even offer, I'm gonna hold it open. They'll bring you right now.
That's what she's saying. We'll see what she got. Last time she finished like two weeks earlier. Well, this is better because she's not, yeah, it's not, yeah.
And I'm leaving now.
She would do all this, she would like to- That's why they made them come.
I got my eye on you.
Melissa Basier, getting a job with Northwell. She's a registered dietitian, so she goes to different clinics. By Marathon? I don't like that.
We'll get off at the regular public board meeting.
I thought you were gonna talk about the clown with the mustache.
And she gets the board to assemble at this table.
If he becomes on the board, I'll be needing him. Seriously.
I didn't pull up until nothing yet, what did you say?
approved. Second.
That's what we do. Little protection.
It's September twenty-first, and our community day event is scheduled for the fourteenth. Okay? All right, that's great. Okay, great. Okay. Okay. No objections, yeah?
We have two block forty requests. Thursday, June fifteen, with no rain date, on South Fifth Street, between Jericho and White Men's Cross Avenue, from eleven a.m. till eleven p.m. And the second one is on Saturday, August ten, with a rainy day of August eleven, on North Fifth Street, between Brooklyn and Old Beards. Can I look at the map?
Yes, and I owe you an old map. I'm sorry, I took it home. I have it tonight for you. I apologize, I had to do a bit to it. But I don't see any compass. It's approved, thank you.
Okay, and two landscaper license renewals. One for the old landscaping in Hickstead, and the other for the grand block and landscaping in Franklin Street. And those are your heads.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Jen. All right, we'll go to trustee reports. Trustee proposal.
We're going to Zillie Police. Tonight, apt to be their thirty-sixth annual Nassau County Police Award. And please say "Awards." And you students attend our things. A couple of members are receiving awards tonight. Of course, I'm not here tonight, but I'm here. Under five hundred hours. We have five members. Sergeant George Driver, Lou Lauer, Derek Naku, Jonathan Levy, Linda Haas-Caple. They'll receive five hundred hour awards. John Kinnan, who is actually the deputy inspector in the lead of the unit. You see the thousand hour award. And promotions tonight be from Sergeant Derrick Naku, becoming lieutenant. Again, not here tonight. I would let them know, you do what you can to help the village. They're all alive. I do appreciate our priests to be here tonight. I don't want you to do any-
My pleasure.
What I'm gonna ask you is to do one favor. I know this new inspector, I don't want to destroy his name, his last name.
Musitic.
One more time?
Musitic.
We did send a malaria requesting him to attend one of our board meetings in the next three months. Hopefully he'll come. He'll be on the floor when he does show, but he's new inspector in my area, so it's reasonable. And we do appreciate you being here tonight also. Tonight, fire department, they all have their manuscript requests. We'll see the guys out walking the street now with the fire trucks. Boys Christian Drive. So, again, I say it all the time, if they don't say in my park, they're less from other towns, different areas, you say fire department, they're saying my park. Not going anywhere in my park quite as long. Be aware of that. Also, so you know, it's in-house. On my fourth street, it's now closed. I'm probably gonna be handed out a point. And at least one of the parks. Well, they all know how this is. There are also a couple of notices, they ask you to let people know, especially, you know, you need everything fires and, uh, water, whatever. If you have children in a house, you do have, um, child safety, you know, labels on the windows. If you need any, let me know. I'll get some from the village staff here. If you have a child, young age, put them on the windows before they know where. They'll be on. Again, tell children, they're not the ones beneath the bed and hide. You know, of course, search for kids. You end up hoping because that's where they end up going, but it makes a lot of bother. If you're calling out to say, yell, call back. What you tell your kids, call back. Have a fire plan in your house, okay? Know where you can meet outside. You know where everyone is. Say you're gonna meet at next door neighbor's house, on their porch. When they went to that house, you know who's at the house. So you have three twenty-six, three twenty-two, and every forty. You know, lately, the news, they're terrible. Smooth failure of people. Again, you ever fire a house, close the door. Don't let your air come into the house. You know, go by the window, let people know you're there because they come out. Or where your sheets are, something over there. Okay? Just say light, and walk, or know how far you is. Please be wherever, please be to your family. Along this thing, now when you walk through season, do not store your train tanks in your house. Outside, in the garage, okay? But do not store them in your house, very dangerous, okay? That's what we're talking about the fire department. Little. They're playing, playing games that could be, you know, your other field right now, um, bleeding. Really, near to my heart. We're trying to do the best we can to have a new field for them. And everything's all up. The old kids who couldn't play, the other districts and stuff, but, um, my popular school's doing a good job. They're just playing a little local school now. Actually, source on the web today, um, National Living Carries are having their annual food drive, full of pantries. So this Saturday, the eleventh, buy your mailbox in your house, you can eat canned goods, and the mailman will pick them up. People put pantries in the areas, um, people eat food, and then the people that work, whatever. So this Saturday, the mailman will collect this, look for canned goods, I've waited a while, and he's still here. Do the best you can, as you're gonna try to remember that. That's what happens in a little- Just one more thing, um, I don't know, Michael Sokol, um, he was one of our firemen. He knew my park. He was the, him and, and we encountered the one that rescued me, uh, grandmother and the four-year-old girl that unfortunately passed, and it's hard to work that car that we fired that we had a couple of months ago. So he won fireman of the year, um, with my park. And I saw it in the Nassau County paper that he also won an award from Nassau County. So I just wanted to recognize him.
Hey, trustee proposal. May I, good evening. At the zoning board of appeals, next scheduled meeting for zoning board is June twelfth. As of today, no applications for this. And the architectural group, like the next meeting, the architectural group, is scheduled for Wednesday, June fifth. As of late, no applications for this. For beautification, I want to thank all the volunteers that came out on Saturday, May fourth, the annual village of my park, the state cleanup. Volunteers from Boy Scout troop two eighty-eight, Boy Scout troop five forty-four, Girl Scout troop fifteen thirty-seven, as well as residents and deputy mayor, Mayor Dallas Cudrina, trustee Ryan Berger. Volunteers came to create a tree around the communal log, as well as up and down Second and Thirteenth Avenue, and also clean the leaves and coffee around the marijuana train station. And the tree committee, this year's tree committee chose two types of trees. The first one is the Japanese zebu, and the other one is a flowering plum tree. The Obama Public Works has been working out, been working on replanting these trees throughout the village. So the Japanese zebu has a thirty-foot height, twenty-five-foot width, with full maturity in twenty years. With very distinctive vase shape and, uh, dark, dark green leaves and dark, all yellowish orange colors. And the other type of tree is a thunder plow, flowering plum, with pink flowers in spring and deep purple, uh, leaves in summer. And it also has a twenty-five-foot height and twenty-foot width. So we purchased like thirty-five trees altogether, and they're going very fast. If anyone would like them, they're called dead leaves. Uh, that's it.
Thank you, Rich. Trustee Berger?
Okay, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow my park residents. Just on the village department report, uh, on the village court, the last village court hearing was held on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty nineteen. And a total of seventeen cases were heard. Everything from illegal parked cars, to working without permits, property, maintenance, et cetera. And also to kind of go along with, uh, there was a concern about multiple residents in single-family homes. So this is where we look to residents to also bring that to our attention. We have a number of, um, a number of them that recite the theory of using a single-family home by more than one family, uh, two-family home, more than, uh, more than two families, et cetera. So again, there's, you know, these are residents that contact, um, and then we have our police officers who are out investigating, um, to go, uh, investigate the residents. The next, uh, meeting of the village court is scheduled for, uh, May fifteenth, uh, twenty nineteen. And we have a total of eleven cases that will be heard. Again, uh, everything from illegal use of a single-family home, working without permits, and property maintenance. Special use, there was, uh, no special use application submitted for consideration, uh, the last board. And there has been one special use application submitted for consideration, uh, which was actually to be from next week, for a hundred, uh, hundred and related to Lake Road. One oh five Lake Road, uh, and that'll be heard next week. A total of fifty-three permits, um, were handed out between four eighteen to five nine, not twenty nineteen. Thirteen building permits, twelve, uh, fifteen plumbing, six dumpster, two roof permits, six fence permits, sidewalk and driveway, four of them, seven street opening, uh, opening and closures. And, yeah, it's in on building. Long Island Railroad, okay. A lot of activity, as everybody knows, has seen, on the third track project. I'm gonna go, um, by, by section. First of all, Covert Avenue. Obviously, Covert Avenue has been closed since April fifteenth. Uh, the team is progressing. If you go down, uh, if a lot of folks are curious to what's happening, please stay behind fences. All right? See if someone goes, kind of, go around, move like that. Um, we can now check them occasionally, and the TTC is supposed to be locked, but please stay behind fences. All right? If you look in there, and you can see that the sergeant is down, but please be careful. Right, uh, I've noticed one of the complaints we had is the noise blankets not being on fences. I witnessed that people look at it, and they have the noise blankets on there. I did, um, the other complaint was the covering of the dirt piles. There was dust falling around. Uh, I couldn't get to, uh, Covert Avenue. I noticed on North Park Road, they've got a big pile of cans covered. So I don't know if anybody on Covert is here today, but they let me know if those covered, not in the driveway or on the way. The detour plan, overall, um, seems to be working well. We are making, uh, continuous adjustments. To give you some examples, uh, we do have, uh, on Stewart Avenue and Covert, uh, there's gonna be a configuration, um, that's gonna be changed, a slight modification. Go down Covert Avenue right now, and we'll try to make the heading towards Stewart. And if you're going northbound, you gotta make a left onto Stewart. You go down, you know, instead of the right, if you wanna go left onto Stewart Avenue, um, one of our trustees, so you actually have to go to Covert Avenue. And that can get a dangerous situation. So we actually worked, uh, modified a traffic plan that was approved by Nassau County last week, and it should be implemented, uh, hopefully by tomorrow. But by the weekend, I'm sure. The holdup was, we just need to get a couple more signs put up. So I think that's it. Uh, we did put a request, um, requesting light, uh, the light at first in Covert, be put on as a four-way blinking, because you know, right now, it's still going through the cycle. And that would, uh, limit the traffic, so we can, a lot of times you're just sitting there, and the traffic's coming in, uh, Covert. So we're working on that. By Twelve Street, Jericho and Ingrams, uh, the traffic sign climbing, there's backup on the Twelve Street. I noticed that today. Trying to get that, uh, working, we need to work with Nassau County, get the signal, uh, the timing change. When you make that right, you go right away to what they turn, and that'll get the backup. Traffic doesn't move. Uh, Ford Street and North Park Road, um, that is being utilized as a haul route as well. But we've had, uh, we've got calls of, um, people blocking, uh, North Park Road, blocking the intersection where you can't make the left and so forth. So we've, uh, put a request in through TC. They're gonna go to Nassau County, we're gonna do not block. We'll put some striding on the roadway, as well as do not block the signs to block that situation. We had a couple of those done for Park as well. Um, and, uh, like I said, we made some initial adjustments, again, from the operations. Again, yeah, we mean, if you see something, you know, uh, give us, send us an email, so we can make the adjustments. As we, obviously, uh, you know, our back complaint, I mean, you know, my street, I live on South Ninth, there is an increased traffic. People are gonna go down North Park Road, or they don't go, you know, all the way to North Park Road. So I have seen, um, the decrease in that. I know personally, there was a block, and I guess we don't know if we can make a right turn, make the stop signs, and so forth, to clear the road. Go, uh, go to Stewart Avenue, and then make the left on North Park Road. So that's moving. We also got a request in Wayne Street, um, this is at the other project, to basically try to make it one way, that's something we're asking that way, or we've got to look at it for the residents. Road traps, uh, last year, we mentioned that, and that- Road traps, um, last board meeting, I mentioned that, we've had a request, uh, the 3TC to increase the road traps. Um, on the phone, they still don't have a map. Uh, I did a telecon with them. Uh, they have eighty-six traps between Forest Park and Urban. They have now a total of a hundred and three traps. Um, supposed to be get, get the drawing of those traps, but actually, they're, they're holding in my car road, but I want to see that on the website, but it's showing. New High Park Road itself, uh, utility relocations, uh, they're still moving forward on that. Uh, like I mentioned, the last board meeting, as long as Colbert Avenue is closed, uh, 3TC has been holding to their commitment not to completely do a lane closure. Um, with, with the amount of traffic now that's on New High Park Road, I haven't seen any lane closures since, uh, since Colbert's been closed. And again, if you see that, please send a note, because they told us they're gonna fire. And, uh, let's see. Oh, we had a resident, uh, about construction vehicles on Fourth Avenue, and I mentioned, you know, we've taken a pair of that, where, you know, we don't want them, it's not a construction site. Um, and even with a traffic moving along, so, uh, that's what we take care of. Uh, a request came in from a resident, uh, about a bike lane on New High Park Road. So it's a great suggestion. Unfortunately, the drawings and design is actually done already, all right? And it's in construction, the drawings are a hundred percent construction. That being said, uh, we are taking a look at, possibly doing something on Seventh Fourth Street. So we'll take a look at that. Sam, yes, this is how it was a suggestion. Okay, thank you for that. Um, but we, we'll take a look at that. Rich already mentioned a temporary fire facility that's fully up and running, so that's great, uh, that took a little bit more, uh, effort, but, uh, everything's, uh, worked on that. And I did a survey of the area, um, two weeks ago, and I went back with, uh, deputy mayor on Saturday, everything was pretty much done, except for the security. Everything was done, except for the security, but not to come today. Electrical substation, um, down on South, uh, Ninth Street. Uh, thirty percent design was supposed to be submitted for that on the twenty-sixth of April. As of today, I have not received that. Put it all into 3TC, uh, they believe it was in-house, and we should have received that. Uh, but, uh, some of our residents who live right in that area, very, uh, you know, they wanna see the little designs, so they're probably just gonna go out to. Uh, one fifteen New High Park Road storage facility, you see, that's coming down. Uh, they've got about three quarters of the building down. I was hoping that the rest of the building would be down today, but I thought it'd happen, it broke past, it's coming here, and still got it up somewhere. Expecting it to rest of it to come down, uh, tomorrow, uh, to get that. Uh, another question that came up on soil sampling, uh, between the row, uh, right away between Colbert and New High Park Road. Uh, that is currently not on the midterm schedule, we're watching that closely. Soil samples, as we've mentioned, both on New High Park Road and Colbert, were currently, those came up within, uh, are all on the website, and they came up within the, uh, DDC limits and so forth. So I think, I think, obviously, we're concerned about the right of way, and as a part of the dirt tract. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, there's a requirement that the soil sign is not to be within six months in terms of when you start dealing. So when that plan, when you come in with a second part, dirt tract, when it starts dealing, for six months prior, or actually less than six months, we're gonna do that sort of thing. That's all I have in the Long Island Railroad project. For the veterans affairs, um, and the American Legion, uh, first, Memorial Day Parade, there's a flyer out over here. Uh, Janet Bevers, thank you very much again. Uh, there's a flyer, you should see that out, it's on, uh, May twenty-fifth, all right? And the times are between ten AM and one thirty AM. At the same time, uh, Janet and I are working with the, uh, VFW and American Legion to come together, uh, this agenda, as well as this speech, so that, uh, we can, we can have a draft for it in place. And the last thing is, uh, on May eleventh, we do a car wash, two ninety-eight car wash, on late, the community, uh, community blocks. So come out and support the trip. Go ahead.
Thank you. You have a plug?
Yes.
And, uh, I'll just put a plug in for the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, I think that's a very, very special time. New High Park, again, uh, that's the, the one day of the year where we, as a community, can come out to honor the, the young men over the course of many years. Fifty-six young men from New High Park died in battle, uh, for our freedom. The least we can do is come out on Memorial Day and, and honor them in the tribute that we do as a community. So please, please come out, please take it seriously, whether you're along the parade route, here at Village Hall, over at Memorial Park. Uh, just help us, uh, remember those, those people. Many of the families may be long gone, but they're from New High Park, they'll always be from New High Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will be brief. I'll start with the newsletter. The newsletter is, the spring newsletter is, uh, currently, uh, that should be in the mail, if you receive them, so hopefully in the next week or so. Um, we should have them. Uh, it's a lengthy one, a probably about twenty pages. Um, so, please, lots of information in there, uh, the track, or the parking house, and who are these, uh, which if you don't get the newsletter, it will also be available on our website. And I'd like to thank Janet for all her help with the newsletter. Okay. Uh, I have some good news from the clerk's office. Uh, we have heard, heard recently that, um, the governor, uh, well, when we were in the process of doing our budget, the governor had, uh, taken away. Uh, in funding, which we need, that all the villages were, were receiving on an annual basis, pretty much the same number every year. And we learned that we were losing that money, and now we have learned that we will be getting it. So that is a great, the village of, uh, a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars that we do not have to include in the budget, and, uh, not associated with the track project. Um, it affects all the villages and just, uh. So, uh, considering that we did the budget without that money, and this is new money for us, we will, um, hope to take that money and spend it on uni-meters for the railroad. So we hope to eliminate the, um, vouchers for the parking, uh, it's a really antiquated system. Um, so we're still working through numbers to see how many, uh, you know, uni-meters that'll get us in the building, and everything that comes with that. So, uh, I'm happy to report that at least that money is coming back to us. Moving on to clerk's office, um, tax bills, uh, are ready, and they've probably been mailed by the end of the month. Taxes for June are ready for questioning in July. Uh, moving on to the parks, uh, a lot of work going on in the parks, cleanup-wise, we received, we did a real mulch for the playground area. We cleaned up a lot of the holes and fences, it's all red, it's a very, very park. And we started, uh, kind of saying, like, scraping a whole, we go, uh, the playground area. Uh, it was really boring and rusty, and we, uh, so replacing it, and we've done, it's really very costly, so. We need three days without rain, and I don't know if you'll have that, but we're going to scrape it, put it down, and get, we need to, I hope you have a question. Uh, I'm just, uh, uh, obviously, uh, it is school budget vote time, so if you have, um, haven't received your, uh, Savannah school, or New High Park, uh, newsletters, including the, uh, budget. I, I think Savannah was having a budget hearing tonight. Um, New High Park's having one, I believe, on the thirteenth, they left budget hearing. And school budget vote will be, um, on the twenty-first, and we vote in the tongue lock, in the, uh, and I believe both districts, both Savannah and New High Park. The budget for the tax, uh, the tax had two point three nine, two point six, considering the lines, um, so it's gonna come down to vote for that. I know the school board, uh, has a few seats up for election, and two of them aren't contested, so there's three spots, um, to vote for. And when you go to vote, you can also vote for the library, um, budget as well, and then it'll be in the library newsletter, but the budget is in the newsletter, uh, as well. Um, for due results, it's the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, thank you.
And you can check the school website then, and usually the budgets are all on there, you can see everything, uh, you can't read it, so. There's a concert at, uh, at the library, I'd like to share, there's pre-concert, the gold guitar orchestra, uh, and that will be something the nineteenth, until the. Uh, one other event I'd like to share, um, since we're talking about Memorial Day, the town on Hampstead has their, um, Memorial Day commemoration and fireworks tonight. Uh, and there is, um, it's, it's a pre-event, you have to wait for. And, uh, they are offering pre-parking for veterans and active military. And that starts at six fireworks, so it starts until, uh, dark, which is generally not really a night. Um, and that is all I have.
Thank you. And for my report, just a couple of things. First off, because of the Third Track Project, as many of you know, we, we did regretfully cancel the street fair this year, because we thought with all this, uh, traffic going on. Too much if we hadn't closed Jericho Turnpike. But to not break from tradition, uh, we are organizing a community day in Memorial Park, and that's for September fourteenth. And, uh, and Janet and Rich Pulisco, we thank both very much for taking the lead on that. And we hope to have a day there in the park where we've got all the different, uh, community groups out there, merchants, uh, we've got, uh, some entertainment lined up. Once again, we're sponsored by Northwell Health, and, uh, the, uh, Katie's Run is sponsoring the music. So we thank them very much, and we look forward to that again. Janet mentioned that September fourteenth. And so we'll, we'll see more about that as well. There's another, I, I don't think you mentioned this one, Ryan, but there's another special use hearing coming up June twentieth, or two forty-nine Jericho Turnpike. Uh, that's for, uh, martial arts, that just came before the port, uh, earlier this week. And, uh, on Department of Public Works, uh, I guess the big story there again is the DPW facility. So we have gotten some, uh, some early schematics from the architect, uh, which look pretty promising. Uh, another thing that sort of, uh, delayed us, because, uh, when we're looking at that property, we also looked at, well, could we reorientate, uh, Sturdy Avenue just a little bit to give us more room for the park and the DPW garage? So we evaluated that a little bit, uh, while it looked promising. We thought it would also add a lot of, uh, cost and complexity, uh, most likely because it involves, uh, approaching into Forest Park. And coordinating with Nessa County and utility companies. So after evaluating that, we kind of scrapped that idea and moving ahead with the original design. The designs look good. In the meantime, uh, deputy mayor and Rich Pulisco are looking at park amenities, and how do we beautify the park? And, and get new park playground, get new ball field, uh, perhaps lights, uh, sensitive to the, to the neighbors. Uh, but all things to, to be evaluated. And, uh, we're working then, uh, our, our immediate concern, uh, as I mentioned before, is to secure the funding from this, from the state, so we don't pay for it. Uh, so we're, with the architect's help, we're developing a budget. Uh, we then have to take that to Albany to get them to, uh, lock in the, the exact amount of funds, because when the, when the commitment was made to us, it was more or less an open-ended commitment. Without a, within a amount, and that's why we owe them to, to secure that money. So we hope to move that project along, but it, like others, is a little bit behind. We, we would have hoped to be ready for deconstruction out of the original, uh, the existing facility today. Uh, but we're not there yet. Uh, we still have to, once we get the budget approved, we have to go down, go out to bid for a contractor, uh, according to the designs that have been made up. So it'll still yet be a while. To the gentleman's point before, uh, we, you know, we can engage with, uh, with Lily to see if they can make some use of the remaining time in the season. If we're not gonna be able to, if we're not gonna be using it, if you. It's about a little, right now. So we'll take some, uh, action on some resolutions at this point. So we have a resolution for abstract eighteen dash twenty-nine, uh, general fund paid, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents, motion. Second? All in favor? I pass unanimously. And a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between budgetary accounts. Be hereby resolved, the village board approves the transfer of unused appropriated funds between the following budgetary accounts for the year ending May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. The purposes follows: to increase the insurance recovery revenue line for funds received from workers' compensation insurance for Frank Rayo, and to increase refuse personal services that was not budgeted from one hundred four dash two six eight zero insurance recovery, one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, to refuse personal services, one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. May I have a motion? All in favor? I pass unanimously. And a resolution authorizing transfer of funds between budgetary account codes. Be hereby resolved, the village board approves the transfer of unused appropriated funds between the following budgetary accounts for the year ending May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. From election contractual, two hundred fifty dollars, ads and public notices, one hundred fifty-one dollars, trustee conferences, three hundred fifteen dollars, a total of seven hundred sixteen dollars. Apply two central garage uniforms, one hundred forty-six dollars, and mail data, uh, contractual services, five hundred seventy dollars. May I have a motion? Passed unanimously. Were all those in favor? I jump the gun, so, okay. Uh, any old business, any new business, and a motion to close? All in favor? I pass unanimously. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it.